At this time, I'm going to call the Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onasa Rosen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, excellent. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion to pass that agenda? John?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, looking for a second? Therese?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Today, we have our Police Chief Reverend here to speak with us. So, welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate you allowing me some time this evening to introduce you to two very important people whom are embedded into our department. And I apologize, some of you have met them, but most of you haven't because I was remiss in actually getting them before you. So, I'm first going to ask Necca to step forward. Necca is an actual employee of Hennepin County under the Joint Community Police Partnership Program. And all of you have heard me talk about this program. Oh, you can, Necca's like, where is she? You are.
Right there.
So, she's a part of our Joint Community Police Partnership Program. She's an employee with Hennepin County, as I said. And we have been very fortunate to have Necca embedded into our building since January of last year. And I'll just tell you a little bit of a brief history about why we became affiliated with JCPB, as we call it. And some of you have heard this story, but back in 2015, when we lost Barway Collins to the murder that his father committed, we decided that we did not have a great partnership with our Liberian community. And I knew that other communities around us had JCPB as a program. So, it's something that we reached out to the county commissioners on and eventually in 2017 became part of that program. With that said, even though we've been part of the program since 2017, and I'm not just saying this because she's standing here, the program really didn't get off the ground until she started with us. She really has done an outstanding job. And I'm going to give her a few words so that she can talk to you about herself. So, Necca.
All right. Thank you. Good evening to all of you. Like Chief Reverend said, I've been in this role since January of last year. And really, the premise behind my role is to work on maintaining and building trust in relationships between the police department and the community that it serves. And so, my role covers a plethora of activities, initiatives, that focus on that, building strong relationships between the Crystal PD and the City of Crystal community. We have a focus on multicultural groups of the parts of the population and also youth. So, we do a lot of youth-focused initiatives. Some of you have attended some of our programs that we've hosted before. Nice to see you. But again, the premise is really that it's important to be consistent and very proactive in being engaged with the community. And so, that's what I'm here to do. So, yeah, it's been great so far, so far, so good. Yeah.
Any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Savannah, can you step forward? So, once again, as you know, we have a mental health social worker embedded in our police department as well. And this is Savannah, who has been with us since May of this year. I won't tell you where we stole her from, but we did steal her from a city that was pretty close to us. And we thank God every day that we did, because her too, very much like Necca, even though we've had an embedded social worker, she really has brought us up to the next level. So, we really appreciate her and what she does. So, I'll let her say a few words.
Yeah, I guess I'm happy to be here and being Crystal. And I'm open to any questions, if there are any, about my role.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Yeah. So, the scope of my work is to address underlying behaviors to why a person might be having contact with the police in the first place. A high volume of our calls have a social service component. So, it's getting them connected to services or resources on a voluntary basis, but immediately. Instead of having to navigate those systems on their own, I can be an ally and reach out to them. It's a lot easier for the community to accept help than it is to come and ask for help. So, those are kind of the goals of our program.
So, to be clear, you're not responding at all, correct?
If an officer is on scene and they think that it's appropriate for me to come out, then I do join them on that call.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
That's real good to know. I know in Minneapolis, I've had experiences where they have quite a developed social work structure where they have responders that go actually before the police if there's a known mental health issue. And I like that. I like that a lot. And this just adds that functionality to our community, and I really like that. So, thank you. And you may sit down unless anybody's got other questions. Necca, I've seen you interact with the officers, and I am just ecstatic to see how well you get along with them. It's been nice watching you over the period you've been here. You're obviously well-liked, and it shows. And I love the fact that you're giving them a hard time, just like they give you a hard time. So, it's awesome to see that camaraderie go.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, don't make them stay.
Wait, wait, what?
Yeah, don't make them stay for this.
You're welcome to be.
You're welcome to be.
There will be a test.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you for doing that, Chief.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, consent agenda is before us. I'll read that into the record at this time. Approval of the minutes from the following meetings, work session on July 13th and work session on July 18th, council meeting on July 18th, and the budget work session on August 3rd. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution acknowledging and approving the remaining, or renaming of the plat for FARs addition to FARs second addition. And then, adoption of a resolution ordering the preparation of an assessment role declaring the amounts to be assessed and setting a public hearing date of October 17th, 2023 for delinquent accounts. Looking for a motion on that one? Anyone? John?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second? Tracy?
I'll second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next is open forum. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak during open forum? Anybody wishing to speak during open forum? Is this related to any of the, any of the other public hearings we're going to have?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if it's just, I mean, having issues in my neighborhood.
Could you please step forward? State your name and give us your address. And we're going to have you fill out a yellow sheet when you're done so you know who you are. But yes, you're.
My name is Scott Conizel. I live at 6916 58th Avenue North. The issue we have is the properties around us are rental properties, unfortunately. I know there's nothing we can do about that, but it seems like we've had lots of issues with our neighbors. We've called the police. We've talked to the chief. My wife talked to the chief. I know even a couple of years ago, Chief Reverend helped us with a neighbor that was having parties at 2:00 in the morning and waking us up. They got evicted. The main issue we're having right now is that one across the street. Is there code enforcement on weeds? Their yard, their weeds are this tall.
There is.
I mean, they got an old pool that's laying in their backyard that's probably full of mold and everything else has been sitting there for a month now.
What was it?
It's like a one that blow up, like jungle gym pool things, swimming pool things. And I mean, what started that problem is, I mean, back in April, the task force raided that house. We had unmarked pulled up in front of our house, task force with their weapons, and everything got out. And it's like, we don't know what happened in that house. We're living across from these people, right across the street. We were in fear of our lives, you know? About a month ago, there was a shot fired. A woman shot at her children or in the garage or something with a weapon. It's like, are these people still allowed to live in this house? Isn't there laws or rules that, especially rental properties? I'm just, we're at a loss sometimes. Then the neighbors around the corner from us, that's rental property, we've had issues with them. Their dogs are jumping and growling at the fence at us. We've talked to animal control. We've talked to the police. They've came out and talked with us. This lady is actually harassing us. We can just be in our backyard, sitting there peaceful. She'll start cussing at us and calling us names. Even sometimes, we just ask her dogs, stay away from the fence. You know, we're trying to be nice with them. Nope. Then she'll start yelling at us. They have a tree in their backyard that's about dead. So does the house on the corner. You know, it's just the issues that we're having with the neighbors, the rental properties. I mean, we've been here 23 years. It was great 20 years ago. Over the past several years, our neighborhood's gone to crap. We actually just recently tried to put our house on the market. We can't get enough money for our house to move. We're just stuck. We're at a loss. I don't know if there's any help that we can get with these rental properties, if they screen people a little better, tell them the rules, peace and quiet. We're trying to be peace and quiet, be respectful, but none of them are. Play their music loud, dogs, everything. It's just, we can't live a peaceful life where we live, and we can't move because we're stuck. I don't know if there's any way the city, the police, anybody can help us. Animal control, I know they have four dogs in that house, too. There's rules on that.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about a whole bunch of different code enforcement-type stuff. I encourage you to call the city, and they'll let you know which ones they can do something about.
I've talked with them.
Okay.
I've talked with animal control. We've talked with the police. We had a police man knock at our door a couple of weeks ago and talk with me about what's going on with the neighbors.
Did they tell you that they needed a kennel license or not?
Um, I just, we just know it's a rule.
Yeah, okay.
We know it's a rule. And I mean, the big issue is their dogs. They, I mean, when they're attacking the fence, on the other side of the fence at us, I know they're pit bulls, I mean, that's kind of irrelevant, but we've talked with them, and it won't stop. We can't be in our backyard and have a peaceful evening without their dogs barking at us.
Okay.
But I mean, as for, you know, the cleanup for the yard across the street with weeds, the two trees that are dying on these properties that should be addressed by the forester, I know we were addressed years ago, and we cut down trees in our backyard when the forester told us to do it. You know, a neighbor's tree fell in my shed last year. Fell in my property because it wasn't detected. But, you know, it's just, we can't live a peaceful life where we're at. And I'm hoping, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but, you know, it's just.
Got it.
I was just going to say, sir, if you could make sure that you have your contact information on that.
Yeah.
Staff can follow up with you to get the specifics again and follow up on the various items.
You know, I mean, can we get an harassment restraining order against the neighbor if they start yelling at us? What can we do or not?
That's going to be a case-by-case situation. So, let's start with, the city can contact you and get more information on the subject property, the properties that you're referring to.
Yeah.
And we can address each one.
Okay. I mean, I'm just trying to get a ball rolling and see if we can just try to have some peace and quiet in our neighborhood.
Okay.
So.
Well, thank you, Scott, for coming in. This is a, this is a great way to get our attention. So, thanks for using the open forum.
Especially the shooting across the street. I mean, we're in fear of our lives someday. I mean, that bullet, they have no conscience. That thing could have came through a wall into our house, and who knows what happened? You see it all over the cities right now.
Right.
And where it happened, right across the street from me, I think, I don't think they should be living there, or she shouldn't be, or something. I don't know.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Or something, I don't know.
Anyone else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one else approach, we'll close open forum. Staff will follow up with you, Scott, and we'll go from there. Is that the reason you came here? To have that?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to be, you don't have to stay there if you don't want. So, it's not disrespectful. All right. Next, we have our public hearing on considering a resolution on the vacation of an easement at 6048 and 658 Lakeland Avenue. Our city planner, Dan Olson, is here to address the council.
Yes, Dan? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As was said, this was a public hearing to vacate an easement. It's the first of two actions that you're going to be taking on this property tonight. So, here is a recent aerial photo showing the property. It's a vehicle sales lot. This is the description of the actual easement vacation request. So, the applicant is consolidating the lots, which you will see a little later in the meeting. And that action was required because the applicant would like to expand the parking lot for the, for the car dealership. As, in addition to the lot consolidation, the applicant is proposing to vacate existing drainage and utility easements, which are highlighted in yellow there on the screen. New drainage and utility easements will be dedicated on the lot consolidation plat that you will see a little later in this meeting. As a matter of routine, I also, I always notify the four utility companies to see if they have any issues with the vacation, and they all four stated that they do not. So, tonight, you're being asked to hold a public hearing and then consider approving a resolution to vacate the drainage and utility easements for the, for this property. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here as well.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan specifically? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Not yet, not yet. Talking to the council. Okay, so no questions for Dan at this moment. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for testimony. And I'm assuming you want to address us on that topic. So, why don't you step forward, state your name, give us your address, and make your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Deborah Everson, and I am the architect on this lot consolidation project, expanding the parking lot. The owners are here with us, so if you have any questions, they'll be happy to answer them. We've been working with Dan to get this project going, and we're looking for your approval for, I guess, the lot consolidation. You've already dealt with the lot easement vacation, so if you have any questions.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Go ahead, John.
Just a comment. We've, you know, been aware of this for a long time, and we've been working on it. And so, I think finally now we're at a point where we're going to resolve this issue.
Oh, good.
So, yeah.
It's a positive thing, you know, to get
Sure.
more business going. So, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right, anyone else wishing to address the council on this issue? Seeing no one approach, I will close the public hearing. And looking for a motion or a resolution. John, go ahead.
Make a motion approving a resolution vacating easements within the plats of Storm 1 addition and Engstrom addition.
All right. Looking for a second? Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Done. Yeah. Thanks for coming in. We appreciate that. We like seeing faces and names and put them together. All right.
You could show a little more emotion when you win, you know?
All right, next, we have a public hearing relating to the licenses and imposing regulations on retail sale of edible cannabis products. Adam, are you taking this one on?
Yeah, I'll just introduce this. This is a not legally required public hearing, but because there, as was described during the work session before the regular meeting, there's multiple parts. And staff thought that it would be helpful to, at least for the opportunity, if there are questions by the public, to ask those questions or, in our effort to be transparent, we, we had already, we decided to post the notice for this, and then instead of canceling it, we thought that would just be actually most efficient and productive to just hold a public hearing. So, we have not received any public comment in advance of this, but we will be acting on the, the council will be looking, or be asked to act on the multiple parts regarding the cannabis issue later in the agenda.
All right. Any questions for Adam from the council? Seeing none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for testimony. Anybody wishing to speak and give testimony in relationship to this subject of requiring a license and imposing regulations on retail sales of edible cannabis products with the city? Anybody? Seeing nobody approach, I will close the public hearing. We won't need to do a resolution on that. That's on the regular agenda, and we'll address that at that time. All right. Regular agenda, first item is disbursements of $25,000 or greater. We've got a pretty good list going on here, so bear with me. Health Partners for August Health Insurance premiums of $129,000, $129,869. IRS Electronic Payments for Federal FICO withholdings for payday 7/7/23, $73,875. Center for Energy and Environment Home Improvement Loan Grant Program, $46,851. SEH for Utility Reconstruction Projects, $62,370. West Metro Fire Rescue District for July Contribution is $123,281. Met Council for August Waste Services, Waste Water Services, $138,936. DA Schiffsky and Sons for the 2023 Mill and Overlay Final Payment, $28,308. GMH Asphalt Corporation for Community Center Parking Lot, $400,150. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for June Water Costs Charges, I mean, $321,184. Northside Construction Company for 2023 Utility Reconstruction, number three, for $799,899. Minpara for Employee Required Contributions for 7/21 is $69,886. IRS Electronic Payments for Paydate 7/21, $79,900. Northwest Asphalt for 2022 Utility Reconstruction, number six, $263,790. Center for Energy and Environment Home Improvement Loan Grant Program, $37,968. ECSI Systems Door Access Fobs for $26,400. Ferguson Water Works for the Hydrant Repair Parts and Emergency Joint Water Commission Repair Supplies of $40,128. Logis for the three-month application support and hosting, $122,568. Northland Reconstruction for Shelters for Broadway Park, Crystal Highland Park, $66,748. Minpara for Employee and City Required Contributions for Pay Date 8/4/2023, $71,005. Total distribution, total distributions of $25,000 or greater is $2,903,123.26. Any questions on any one of these items? Yeah, Tracy?
Just questioning on the $26,000 for the door access fobs. What building is that? Is that the police building? Is that?
Those were, my understanding is a mark he made, no, but those were prior to the police. It's an older, older charge. That was my understanding. When I, I asked that when I, when I first came up, and what I was told is that it was prior to the current remodel from late last year, there were, there were door fob, it's the little electronic security badges that were replaced outside of that project.
So, just a question about that. So, like, what's the policy if they get lost? Does the employee have to pay for it? Is it just, I mean?
Well, these aren't just the fobs. This is for the, all the work, that's all the readers of the system.
Okay.
Just to clarify that.
Got you.
We do, we do have a policy that when, they, they don't currently have to pay for it.
Sure.
But it's, we're able to, with these, we're able to deactivate them as soon as they're reported.
Okay.
There's obligations on the employee to, to secure them, to maintain them. But if they, if they are lost or misplaced, notify the city immediately.
Okay. So, the $26,000 is not the fob, it's for the access?
Well, it includes the, the actual
Okay. I was thinking it was the fobs, and I was like, gosh.
Right, no, 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 no. This included the labor and the work and all the equipment
Okay, that makes sense.
to actually run them, or to install them as well.
Sure.
All right, so this is the system we've had for quite some time.
Correct. Yeah, it's part of the, part of the overall system that we've had.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Forrest.
I have a question about the Logis charge. Could you expand a little bit on what applications for hosting is?
That's all of our, our regular Logis. It's just, it's a summary of all of our, our Logis software that we have. Typically, they bill us monthly. For some reason, they hadn't billed us for two months, and so, this is three months' worth of our monthly Logis fee for all of our payroll, our budget, our accounting, our utility billing.
Networking?
Yeah, so all, all of our charges.
Okay. I just was wondering how broad that was. Very broad.
Pretty broad. Yeah, pretty broad. All right. Any other items? Seeing no other items, I'm looking for a motion on this item. Go ahead, Therese.
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures over $25,000.
Looking for a second? Tracy?
I'll second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. All right. Our city planner is back with us tonight, Dan Olson. He's going to address the council relating to the auto addition of the, of Lakeland. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. Yes, it's me again for part two of this action on this property. Here again is the aerial photo. This is a table that shows the, the two lots and the sizes of them and the additions that they are approved in. They will, after all is said and done, these will be one lot of about $42,000, a little bit, little bit under an acre, and the address will be 6048 Lakeland. Here is the final plat showing the two consolidated lots. And we do have criteria for the approval of, of lots. There's three criteria. The first is the lot consolidation in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The response here, or the findings, I should say, here is yes. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan as industrial, which includes auto-oriented uses, and the existing vehicle sales business is, does conform to that designation. The second criteria is, does the lot consolidation meet the purpose and intent of the Unified Development Code? The findings here are yes. The purpose of the UDC is to create regulations to avoid or minimize negative impacts to adjacent properties. The existing use has been in existence since the early 2000s as a, as a vehicle sales lot, and does not have negative impacts on the surrounding property. And thirdly, does the new combined lot conform to the dimensional requirements of the UDC? And the answer is yes. So, tonight, you're being asked to consider a resolution approving the Golden Gate Auto addition plat. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Question from the council. None for Dan? Anybody? All right. John, go ahead.
Make a motion approving the Golden Gate Auto addition final plat.
All right. Looking for a second? Therese?
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. Congratulations. All right. Next item on our agenda is the purchase of a new vehicle for the city. John Sutter is here to address the council, welcome John.
All right, thank you Mr. Mayor and council members. So, the staff report goes into a lot, a lot of detail, but I want to just hit the high points here. So, we have three vehicles, community development department, the oldest of the three is a 2014 Ford Focus, which was already scheduled for replacement in 2024. Why replace this vehicle now? Well, first of all, the, the vehicle is starting to deteriorate to the point where the vehicle condition index score warrants replacement. And also, on our inspection team, our three inspectors, we have a range of heights, and frankly, we need a taller vehicle. The other two vehicles are 2019 Ford Fusions, they're slightly bigger than the Focus, but not very much taller, and so this is a, this is a real issue that we, we simply need a taller vehicle to address. So, we already have $26,790 in the fleet fund for this vehicle replacement. We would be able to purchase the proposed 2024 Chevrolet Equinox off the state contract for a total cost, including all the sales tax, the license fee and everything, for $26,429, which is just under what we have in the fleet fund for this purchase. And just for comparison, if we were to purchase this at the manufacturer's suggested retail price, plus the taxes and fees and everything, so an apples-to-apples comparison, it would be about $5,000 more than what we're going to pay by buying it through the state contract. Now, getting at the timing, we really need to order it now due to the lead time in the current market, it's possible this vehicle would still arrive in 2023, but more likely early in 2024. And then, my favorite quote on the right there was, when I saw that review of this vehicle, I thought, that's exactly what a government fleet vehicle should be. So that's why I put the quote in there. Anyway, so our request for you is to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of the 2024 Chevrolet Equinox, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Do we have any electric vehicles in our fleet, and are we considering electric in the future?
We do not have any electric vehicles, we did actually, that was the first thought for this. The problem we were running into is to get a vehicle of sufficient size to kind of solve the problem, we would be looking at a purchase in the low 40,000s, and we do not have charging infrastructure at City Hall anyway, so we would have the cost of setting that up too. And frankly, this vehicle is a bargain. Are, there's sort of a sweet spot for electric cars where you need to drive enough miles each day to justify the extra cost by saving on purchasing gasoline, but not so many miles that you run into range issues. Our inspection vehicles are all, it's all in-town miles, and average mileage is about 50 miles a day, and just, we don't use enough gasoline for that type of vehicle, or that type of usage to, to make up for the extra cost, the electric vehicle, so. The, the short answer is, we did look at it, but it just wasn't a good choice for this particular application. The economics of electric vehicles will probably and hopefully change by the time we have to replace those 2029, or 2019 Fusions in about, you know, six years or so.
Yeah, go ahead Forrest.
A follow-up on that, are we planning to install EV charge, EVSE?
That, I don't have a specific plan in mind, but I know we are going to be talking about it at a staff level among multiple departments, and not just at City Hall, but at potentially other city facilities like, you know, Becker Park perhaps, or the community center, but the city manager can address more broadly when, when we're going to be looking at that.
Yeah, I was, I was told that the, the city has looked at it in the past, and so it's, it's been discussed at a certain level, but as, as things move forward, staff, it's one of the questions that I had just in the last six months, of what is the plan? So, staff is, staff is discussing that, is how, you know, when will the right time be and, and the, the funding of it. Last year, there was grant funding, or federal funding, there, there's funding sources out there, but it has to, has to fit, so.
Yeah.
It is an ongoing discussion.
Because we had discussed it at a park for more public use in the past, and that didn't really make sense, but this would be for fleet use, right? Has that been discussed at council before, the fleet, just the purely fleet, no public access?
I think we, we talked about it a little bit, and it was kind of a not yet.
Okay. Yeah, I remember it being talked about at, I think Bassett, and that, that didn't really make sense because of the more public aspect.
And I'm, I'm assuming Bassett Creek got wired to the point where it's possible if we want to do that down the road. But that's what we talked about at the time. Go ahead John.
I think if we were to do charges here at City Hall, they could be both public use when our city cars aren't being charged overnight, but during the day when our city cars are out, they would be available for the public. Again, with city inspection vehicles only being used 50 miles a day or so, they won't need to be charged every day, you know, a couple times a week might be enough depending on the battery capacity, so, I mean, these, the charges at City Hall, it's not an either-or thing, I think, that, at City Hall anyway, the charges could be both for paid public use as well as to charge up any city vehicles that are parked here.
All right, go ahead John.
And then lastly, I'm assuming you're going to sell the Focus and the funds will go back into the fleet vehicle fund?
Yes, sir, that is exactly correct. We've had very good success with our, selling our vehicles at auction from, from, not just, well, from all departments, but it's mainly Public Works, Mark can speak to that for more info, but, yeah, the demand for used vehicles still seems to be pretty strong, and whatever we get for it will go back into the fleet fund.
Okay. Anything else? Looking for a motion. Anybody going to take John out on this first motion? John, go ahead.
You know, I asked the question, right? Anyways, approving, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement community development inspection vehicle.
All right, thank you John, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Yeah, thank you. Next, the council's considering resolution authorizing the installation of security cameras at the sanitary sewer lift station, our Public Works Director is here, Mark Ray, to address the council.
Good evening, council, this is an interesting one, earlier this year, we had a theft of basically a scrap part, or not a scrap part, but they took it for scraps, so it was very little financial value, but it rendered our emergency backup out of service for two days at one of our lift stations, and so that was a, a new thing for all of our staff, we quickly checked everything, this appears to be a one-off thing, but unfortunately, due to the variety of storms we've had this year, our generators have gotten a lot of work out, and so losing that emergency backup power capability could have some pretty significant impacts. So, the proposal to install some cameras at locations where we have the permanently mounted generators will just help us with monitoring, because we literally have no information on when the person was there. The only reason we saw it is because our staff was there in the morning, went back for a check in the afternoon, and saw that somebody had broken it and took it, taken apart. So we're just trying to have a little more information in case this becomes a new trend. The funding for it, our Santer, our South Sewer Lift Station had $350,000 budget for work, our actual cost for that will be about $125,000 under budget, so we're just going to take a portion of that and put it towards this project, the rest of the funding will just go back into the, the fund balance for sanitary sewer fund. Computer Integration Technologies is the vendor that does all the cameras in the cities, so they have like a proprietary agreement with the vendor, the cameras, we have that one quote from them. And so the motion before you is approving the contract for camera installation at our sanitary sewer lift stations with permanent power generators.
All right, thank you Mark. Questions? Forrest?
This is maybe more for Stephanie, but let's say something were to get stolen in the future, I mean, I've, in my line of work, we've had stuff stolen and stuff happen on cameras, and then it's like, wow, well, that actually wasn't really that helpful for anything, and it didn't deter anything, is, is that, I'm kind of curious what your experience is in terms of cameras helping and all of that kind of thing.
Yeah, so cameras are actually a deterrent, it's something that we actually tell people and residents to have in their houses, the burglars and people who steal things tend to steer away from people who don't have dogs and people who don't have cameras, and so, and, and with something as serious as this regarding our water, I think it's something that is definitely important.
Okay, so it's something that, having that would maybe help an investment, it would, could lead to an investment.
Absolutely.
I think the other big thing too is, as soon as this happened, I literally was on the phone with all my peers in all the neighboring cities, because we didn't know if this was happening in real time, I'm like, hey, you have to go check your lift stations now, because we might have a thing going on. It's, that provides more information to share with law enforcement to, to help in any way that we could, because we literally told them nothing.
Awesome, and then my other question would be, is the system that's going to be installed something where if it would alert you maybe to, if a theft had happened, or is it kind of a, you would notice in person and then you would follow up on the tape?
We would notice in person and follow up, I am looking to see if motion activated alert is part of this or not.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if it's in there, I haven't quite dug into the software enough, but we could at least pull after the.
Cool, thank you.
We could buy a Waze camera, Waze camera, I can't remember what it's called, those are motion activated, they're not that expensive, but I would hope we have that functionability, I would really hope so.
Part of the question too is, who's getting the alert when the squirrel set it off?
Right.
Because some of these are in, like I said, they're kind of out of sight locations, and so.
Yeah.
I think Ben volunteered.
Other duties is assigned.
There you go.
Ben, you're just volunteered.
All right, any other questions? Looking for a motion. Go ahead Tracy.
I will make a motion to authorize the contract for camera installation at sanitary sewer lift stations.
Looking for a second, Theresa?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. This is, seems to be the focus of the day, the next one is considering items relating to licensing, the retail sale of edible cannabis products, and then Troy, want to address the council, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So there's a lot on the agenda this evening related to this topic, so let me just give a, a brief big picture here for the public who may be watching. As everyone recalls, legislature adopted in 2022 some amendments to an existing statute that made edible cannabinoid products legal as of July 1 last year. A number of cities, including Crystal, adopted a moratorium to study the issue, because frankly, there wasn't any direction whatsoever given in the legislation as far as the role of local governments in regulating, licensing, those sorts of things. There was, of course, talk that the legislature would pick this issue up in, in the upcoming legislative session at the time, and of course, they did, and as we know, they adopted a very thorough or far-reaching bill that legalized cannabis use. The issue though is with the timing of when that goes into effect, they really didn't affect, they didn't really address local government's role with respect to the edible cannabinoids, which remain legal, and, and really don't have a regulatory scheme right now, so really, what the council is addressing here in the discussions we've had with council is to cover the interim period between the expiration of your moratorium and when the state licensing scheme is up and running, likely beginning 2025, or at least sometime in that range. And so the council gave direction to staff to put in place a licensing process, so the city is involved in licensing the sale of edible cannabinoid products until the state takes over licensing. So what you have before you this evening is, is a range of things, and again, based on the timing and the fact that you have a two ordinance read in 30 days before something goes into effect, what you have before you is first, an interim ordinance that establishes licensing requirements and imposes regulations, then you have a regular ordinance that does essentially the same thing, that will go through the normal ordinance process, and once the regular ordinance is in effect, the interim ordinance will go away. Then you have a fee schedule amendment to address fees for the new licensing scheme that the ordinances would be putting in place, and then finally, you have an interim ordinance to address cannabis in public places. So I just wanted to give that larger perspective, and so what you have first on your agenda this evening, or the sub item, is the interim ordinance establishing licensing requirements and regulations on the sale of edible cannabinoid products. Without going into great detail, this is a licensing scheme that's, that's similar to your others when it comes to products such as licensing of liquor and tobacco, the, an important note is that it, only eligible businesses may apply for and obtain a license to sell edible cannabinoid products, and under the ordinance, an edible business is one that holds a current tobacco or on or off sale liquor, liquor license for intoxicating liquor. So those, basically you have to have a liquor license or, or a tobacco license to be eligible to apply for a retail sales license for edible cannabinoids. There are, there are also situations or regulations on where these can be sold and, and the sorts of sale operations that are allowed, essentially limiting to retail establishments that meet certain setbacks, that they cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a residential treatment facility, or 500 feet of a public park. There's also prohibitions on sales such as mobile sales, delivery sales, those sorts of things, and then the remainder of the ordinance sets up the administration of this, so how you apply, the, the city's processing of those applications, and, and then also the operational aspects of the, of the business, dealing with how sales can occur, who, who can engage in sales, the storage of the, of the products have to be behind, they can't have direct access to customers, so there's a number of restrictions. And one of the operational requirements that we talked about in the work session was to add to this ordinance, both the interim ordinance as well as the regular licensing ordinance would be to place a restriction on advertisement. The new law that was passed has a statute that specifically puts certain limitations on advertisements of, of cannabis products. What this ordinance would do would be to pull that, those advertisement requirements into your interim ordinance and your regular licensing ordinance, that would be in effect until the state takes over licensing, and also, an add-on provision here that would make it clear, because in that law, the legislature was concerned about advertisement that was attractive to persons under 21, cartoon figures, things like that, images of, of persons under 21 related to the sale of cannabis products. And so, in an attempt to clarify that, the council would, if you adopt the language that's presented here, it would make it clear that the council was finding that the flashing signs, the neon signs, the, the moving message signs related specifically to edible cannabinoid products are included among those things under your interpretation of the statute that says a business licensed to sell these products are not able to engage in, in, in that sort of advertisement, and it's limited to window signs, it doesn't get into other sorts of advertisement signs, that additional sentence doesn't. Other than that, there are penalties associated with this, obviously, if, if there's a violation, the city would have both criminal and, and/or administrative penalty provisions that you could issue, that staff could issue for not complying with the requirements here. Again, this is an interim measure, this first ordinance that you have before you, that will just remain into effect until the regular ordinance goes into effect. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and of course, if the council adopts this, then there's also a summary resolution to adopt as well.
Thank you Troy, Forrest, go ahead.
I'd like to move to make an amendment to the ordinance on the table.
Sure.
I move to amend the ordinance with the possible, with the amendment regarding advertising restrictions as outlined on our, do I need to read this? No, thanks, okay.
All right, looking for a second on that. John, go ahead.
I second that motion.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Any other questions for Troy? Looking for a motion on the ordinance?
Yeah. I make a motion approving an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis business. This is.
Thank you, looking for a second, Theresa?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Looking for a summary language motion? Forrest?
I move for a resolution approving summary language for publication of ordinance number 2023-04.
All right, John?
I second that motion.
All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is the license and regulation piece. Looking for a motion on that. Tracy?
Make a motion to approve an ordinance requiring a license and imposing regulations on the retail sale of edible cannabinoid products.
Thank you. What's going on?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I misheard you, Mayor. I thought maybe you were skipping to the fee schedule. This is the regular ordinance?
This is the, yeah, did you? Yeah, 2023 oh five?
Yes, I guess I don't have the number in front of me.
So we need to do, all right.
Right, it'd be a first reading of that ordinance. So, I'm sorry, Mayor. So we had the interim ordinance that you adopted, and now we're into the regular ordinance. So that's up before you this evening for a first reading. And then also, if, you can just give direction, or you can make a motion. In fact, let's be consistent.
Yeah, let's do it.
If you wish to add the advertising language to this, then there would be a motion to amend. But that can occur after you finish the motion to adopt. Either way.
Yeah, either way. I've got a first.
Give me a second.
John, you got a second?
I second that motion.
Let's go ahead and finish this one, and then we'll come back to the.
Then the amendment.
The amendment, yep. All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I apologize, Mayor, I'm confusing you. It's my fault. So there should be a motion now to amend the ordinance.
Oh, before we do the vote?
Yes, please.
Got it, thank you. All right, looking for a motion on the amendment. Thank you, Forrest.
I move, I move to amend the motion on the table for regarding advertising restrictions. The amendment is in front of the council.
All right, looking for a second. Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
All right. On the amendment, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Now we do.
Now, on the motion for, for the regulation.
For the first reading, yeah, first reading of the.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Sorry about that.
That was my fault.
Next is a resolution amending appendix four of the Crystal City Code to add edible cannabis cannabinoid license-related fees. I'll make that motion. Looking for a second. Go ahead, Forrest.
I'll still second it.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we got through that piece. Troy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the last, second to last item that you have is a proposed interim ordinance to place limitations on where cannabis products may be used. The statute that was adopted during, as part of that larger legislation indicated that local governments may prohibit the use of cannabis products in public places. And then the statute went on to say, but you cannot define public places as including a private residence, that's private property not generally accessible to the public, and then, and the premises of an establishment or event license to permit onsite consumption. So there are some exceptions, but generally, it gave local governments the authority to make it a petty misdemeanor to use cannabis products in the public. And again, it didn't really define what the public was, it just defined it as what was not the public. So what you have before you is this interim ordinance that places a temporary restriction on use in public places, which is defined in this ordinance as a public park right-of-way or parking lot. And those terms are specifically defined as including the public park, playgrounds, sports field, open space, swimming pool, community center, or other recreational area facility. Parking lot means any state, county, or city-owned parking area that is made available to the public for parking. And the right-of-way, right-of-way is the entire area within a public roadway, highway, street, cartway, bicycle lane, trail, or public sidewalk. So it's inclusive of those public places, as we discussed during the work session. Arguably, the ordinance could be broader than that, but as an initial take, thought focusing on the really public-owned spaces should be the focus. But this being an interim ordinance, and it has a period of, of six months, I believe, that it's in effect, that you have the opportunity to make edits to that if you want as part of developing a regular ordinance to address this issue. But right now, it's, the idea of public use of cannabis became legal as of August first. So the idea is to get on this now and then give staff an opportunity to work with city council to develop a more permanent ordinance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, you have the interim ordinance and then a summary resolution.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Troy? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Go ahead, Tajee.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an interim ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis products in public places.
All right, thank you, looking for a second. Go ahead, Forrest.
I'll second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Summary language? John?
I'll be on that one. Make a motion approving a resolution for summary language for publication of ordinance number 2023 dash oh six.
All right, looking for a second. Tracy?
I second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next is our West Metro Fire Rescue District Budget. Adam Bell is here to address the council, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just one last quick, after the seven point five item, the council may know what the legislators felt like trying to pass all the legislation that they were able to accomplish this last session. It was, we're still dealing with it as we just did tonight. So on to the 2024 West Metro Fire Rescue District Budget. At the July meeting last month, the Fire District Board did approve the 2024 proposed budget. Overall, it was a, for Crystal's portion of the increase, it was a ten and a half percent increase. Crystal's share of the total budget was one million six hundred, I'm sorry, yeah, one million six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventeen. The bulk of that is the increase in the lease payments, and then other operational costs. Chief Larson is here tonight, if there's any specific questions. Back in May, the chief did come back, or come to the council and give the preview of the proposed budget. There were, the board looked at it a couple times, there was a work session as well, but it is the same as what was presented to the council back in May. I did include both the board presentation as well as the actual budget details. So if there's any questions that the council has, I'm happy to try to answer them, otherwise, like I said, Chief Larson is here. The process does require that each respective city now, after the board approves the budget, each city council approves, approves the budget as well. So that's why we're here tonight.
All right. Any questions for Adam? Chief Larson? You ready to go?
Am I ready to go? I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
Nothing has changed since I presented it in May.
All right. Looking for a motion then. John?
Make a motion approving the 2024 West Metro Fire Rescue District Budget.
All right. Looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. So in relationship to, to the fire budget, I'm wondering if we could see a growth pattern over like the last ten years as far as what departments are growing and how fast, you know, and including fire as a department? Because I have a perception, and I just, I want to disprove it because I think, I think it's more of an armchair judgment, and I think that information would help me, help me kind of put that into proper perspective.
Yeah, we should be able to, we can have that Thursday, the next budget work session.
We got a lot of different growths, and we were putting in growth in, in parks, and we're putting in growth in roads, and we've been doing some, quite a bit of growth in public safety in both departments. I would just like to kind of get a historical perspective, so thank you for that. Next item is announcements, big part of the night. The council will hold a budget work session this Thursday, August seventeenth at six thirty PM in the council chambers here at City Hall. The office will be closed Monday, September fourth for Labor Day. Next city council meeting is Tuesday, September seventh at seven PM here at City Hall.
September fifth.
What did I say?
Seventh.
Oh, seven PM. I see what I did there. City council meeting and work session are open to the public. Previous and current meetings are available for viewing and listening at crystalmn.gov. All right, any other announcements? Seeing none? John?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Looking for a second. Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right, let's take a couple minute break for whoever needs it, and then.